The time now being six o'clock this time, we'll call this meeting the order be in the May Dawson County Planning Commission Meeting. Give them the invocation from Neil Horn and Horns if you would please now.
Dear Lord, thank you for this beautiful place that we live, and I pray that you can just guide us to make the right decisions for the citizens of this county in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. Ask you to please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated. This time we will have a roll call. When you're ready. And the record will reflect that we are all present tonight. Under announcements, there will be a planning commission meeting next month, same location, same time. As far as the minutes go, assume you've had opportunity to look over the minutes. Is there any amendments that need to be made? If not, is there a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion second to approve all in favor. Motion is carried four zero. Agenda presented by staff, is there any amendments to the agenda? If not, is there a motion?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second, losing a second all in favor. Motion carried five zero. If you're here tonight to speak either in favor or in opposition of any application and you have made contributions of more than $250 to any local official campaign, there is a form that will need to be filled out, which Harmony has up here at the desk. Under new business, we'll begin the application for rezone presentation of Z A twenty two dash zero nine Continental Six Seventy Three Fund LLC. Is someone here to speak for Continental Six Seventy Three Fund? If you would, please write your name and address on the piece paper there on the podium. Please state your name for the record as well, yes.
Sorry, I have a long address. My name is Gwen Wheeler with Continental Properties. For the record, our address is W one five four N eight six seven five Executive Parkway, Wyoming Falls, Wisconsin, five three zero five one. Thank you for your time tonight. I do have a presentation. Oh, Harmony already has it up. I'm a senior development director with Continental and I've now been with the company for almost 10 years. And I've had the pleasure of watching the evolution of our multifamily brand prior to my time with Continental, little before, up to about 2000. Continental was a major retail developer across the country, lots of Kohl's and Kmart's, Sears and things like that. But our founder were privately held, our original founder is still CEO of the company and he knew that the direction was going for development was going to move away from retail and start focusing on housing. And we developed our first apartment brand is called The Springs. And we actually have a couple of those across Georgia, one in Noonan and one in McDonough. We focused on that for a long time, became experts in the field, highly regarded with NMHC. And we've continued to evolve that brand and really focus on quality, you know, what what renters today are looking for. And then after that, we started focusing on another product called Authentix, which is a, our Springs is a Class A luxury, top of the line apartment community. Authentix is a little more workforce housing focused. We have one of those under construction in Cartersville. We have a lot of interest in the Atlanta metro. So that's what brings me here today with our newest brand that we have been developing over the last couple of years called Avantara. And it's something that you may have heard about from some other developers in the area I know are doing some of these as well as across the country becoming a little bit more popular. And can I control that with this? So that's what I'm here to talk about today, but I wanted to talk about the evolution of Continental because we do have a significant amount of expertise in the field of rental communities. We are a owner, developer owner and operator of all of our apartment communities. So it is continental employees onsite managing all of our communities. We do not use a third party management group, which a lot of the major developers do. So part of our brand, whichever it is, Springs Authentix or Avantara, part of the brand is continental. That we, we've even started rebranding our communities to be Springs by continental properties or Authentix by continental properties because we want to be known as a high quality operator. I mentioned some of our communities in Atlanta, but we are all over the country, significant presence in Florida, the Midwest, all over the Midwest, Texas, we go as far as Arizona and Colorado. And then the only Avantara is very new, so I don't have a lot of, you know, images and pictures to share just yet. But we do have two communities under construction, one in Minneapolis and one in the Chicago metro. So I'm really, we're really excited to get to see those coming very soon. So one of the things that I wanted to talk about, you know, why we picked Dawson County. There, we have a very strong market research department that helps us identify what areas fit for the type of community that we want to build there, whether it's Springs or Authentix or Avantara, there's a certain demographic. So Atlanta is a very fast growing metro. So of course, you know, where, like I mentioned, we're very excited to bring many new communities here, but we specifically started looking at Dawson because of the demographics, the employment base, the incomes, the education and the housing stock. So, you know, we get, we kind of utilize our market research department to hone in on certain areas. And then we have an acquisitions team that goes out, looks for the actual land. So the thing that the acquisitions group is looking for is distance to employers, distance to high quality retail. Because renters today are looking for those as amenities for, you know, choosing where they want to live. It's important where their house is located. So, you know, looking at what's going on in the county, the housing supply is not meeting demand. You can see that by the rents that are currently getting achieved, the occupancies. And the growth, the population growth is the, the, the construction permits are not meeting demand. And that is what is driving up the housing prices that we all are hearing about every day on the news. And it's, it's honestly turning people to renting also over purchasing. To my next point, 12% of millennials are choosing not to buy. It's a choice. They're not, it's not that they can't buy all the time. It's they don't want to. They want to rent. They don't want the responsibility. They don't want to be stuck. They want to be able to be mobile and take, you know, uproot and go where their job may take them to another side of the country. And hopefully they'll find another continental development to live in. So I'm here today to request your consideration of a rezon for a piece of eighteen point nine acres on Georgia four hundred and fifty three. Like I mentioned, a very highly traveled intersection near a lot of great retail and, and restaurants and other amenities. So we identified this opportunity. Number one, it's available. It's obviously a vacant piece of property. It's a challenging piece of property. It's the comprehensive plan, as your staff report mentioned, that Harmony laid out, the comprehensive plan does allow for residential. But it's definitely not an ideal commercial site. There's a lot of topographic challenges, environmental concerns, there's drainage ponds there. So we really felt like it was a perfect fit for this type of proposal. So again, looking at the, the demand for, for multifamily, high incomes, the access, I mean, four hundreds right there, you can get anywhere super fast. People are going to look for that, you know, how quick am I going to get to different areas of the county? How am I going to get to my job? You've got the, the outlet mall. I mean, this is an ideal spot for this type of community. And it's a little bit new. I'm sure, you know, some of you guys probably haven't seen one of these and we're still honestly, it's evolving still to this day at, at my office, trying to figure out what, what are the right amenities? What are the right features? But we, you know, to this day, our Springs communities are still evolving. We are constantly getting feedback from our residents talking about what do they want to see? What's the latest technology? So I can promise you that this will continue to evolve even from today until we break ground. But today's proposal is 113 homes. It does stay under the max density of six dwelling units per acre. The home sizes range from nine hundred and eighty three square feet to about eighteen hundred and they are one, two, three and four bedroom options. So a lot of renters also want a lot of, they want choices. They want, they, they, you know, we want to be able to offer a lot of options. What fits their lifestyle? Do they want a garage? Do they not want a garage? Do they want? You know, two bedrooms? Do they want three bedrooms? Do they just want a one bedroom? Different finishes inside, some may have granite, some may have laminate. It's all about different price points and things. We do include appliances in all of the units and we have washer and dryers in all of the units. But we want to make sure that everybody can kind of figure out what works best for them. Wanted to give you just some quick, you know, images from, you know, what we're proposing. There would be a clubhouse onsite with pool, fitness center. That's where our operations staff would be working with the potential future residents, screening them thoroughly, showing them a model unit, all of those things. That's where our maintenance team would be out of also. So obviously the residents can pop in, talk to our staff, let them know if there's any issues. Here's some examples of the exteriors. Now I do want to add that for the zoning criteria that we're proposing today, all of our units have to be attached. They have to be attached home. So we did, you know, we do consider what we need to do in each specific municipality. Where so some of our other Avantaras, we would have fully freestanding single family homes for rent, but here they all will have to be connected. So they'll all be duplexes or triplexes. So keep in mind that the ones you see that are standing alone would be attached to another one at the garage. So it'd be mirrored. We tried to do our best to show that the, you know, to keep any living spaces separated. So you're not having any common walls at a bedroom. It would all be at the garage wherever possible, but we'd have a mix of ranches, a mix of two story, you know, mix of bedrooms. So it really works well for the aging population too. Because they, those folks that are looking for, you know, the empty nesters are looking for less responsibility, downsizing. They want to travel and enjoy their life and not mow their lawn and, and things like that. It's such a great option. Here's just some quick renderings and floor plans to show you how these laid out. You know, they're definitely compact, but we really spend a lot of time making sure that every single square foot of that unit is fully functional and usable. Big closets, open concept, you know, so it feels big and open, high quality materials. But everything is very consciously designed to ensure that it's very efficient and you're getting your money's worth. So this is a good example of the attached garage. You can see how that works. And then the four bedroom and it, this kind of shows you how it would work with the two car garage. And what's, what's really interesting about how we designed these is you can almost kind of attach and detach the garage as needed. So they're almost modular in a, in a sense, but it just really helps us to work with our site plans and be able to work with especially the more challenging sites such as this. So some of the benefits of, of allowing, you know, this rezoning and getting some more multifamily in Dawson County as, as very much needed. It's going to be a different product than you've seen. It's going to be a great housing option for the aging population, the new, you know, the younger folks coming out of college. They have a significant amount of disposable income. They don't want to spend it on their house. They don't want to worry about paying taxes. They want to spend it at the, you know, the outlet mall and going out to restaurants. Again, I want to reiterate, this is continental owning this property. If, you know, it's single ownership for rent. So if there's problems, I know there's been a lot of talk about parking. You know, and with staff and everybody, you know, concerned about where everybody's going to park and blocking streets. We can dictate with our residents where they can and cannot park. So if there's a problem, we have the ability to go out and influence versus a single family subdivision where you just are relying on an HOA to attempt to correct some problems. But we have the ability to compel folks to follow the rules. We do that with the pets, you know, we're very pet friendly. We don't limit breeds and sizes. But they have to sign a contract that says that they're going to clean up after their pets. They have to pay deposits. They have to submit a DNA sample. Because we actually test when they don't pick up after their dog and we find out who did it. And they get a fine. Because we don't want our community being run down. We want everyone to enjoy living there and we want to be pet friendly because that's very important. All the fur babies, but you know, we don't want, you know, they're having pets instead of children and, and we want to continue to be able to provide that, but we also want everyone to be able to enjoy the property, the offleash pet parts. The car care center, all of those things, pack parcel pickups, not to mention the service of our onsite management team that will do handyman services. They will go in water your plants while you're on vacation. They will take your dog out if you're running late. So that's what these folks are paying for. I know that traffic, you know, back to parking and traffic, it's always a hot topic. I kind of addressed the parking. We worked with staff in the fire department to try to make sure that we've taken into consideration all of the criteria, met the code. We will continue to try to enhance the parking situation as much as we can. Jim King is here. We engaged his group to help kind of guide us, but we have not done any thorough in-depth engineering yet. So there may be, we want, we hope to find some more off-street parking spaces. We need to be very conscious of the other site constraints. It's a very topographically challenged site, which again makes it not ideal for commercial use. And I know that school age children has been another issue and, you know, we've been building multifamily units for, you know, 20 plus years. We have a portfolio of, you know, 30,000 homes that we've developed over the country. And typically we see about 10% school age children in our communities, unlike, you know, a traditional single family subdivision where you can expect probably one child per home. So I think that, you know, it's another reason why having this variety of housing options in the county is, is very important. And is a less of a burden on public services. Again, just wanted to land on the site plan. I know I didn't focus on this a lot. I'm happy to answer any questions, but I did want to address some of the comments in the staff report. Yes, we will be improving Dawson Village Way as, as part of our community. That would be our front door. So it's very important that that is a very nice road. We would hopefully try to control some of the cut through traffic there. And then, and that is where you would access our clubhouse and pool. So they would be able to kind of monitor the comings and goings, greet, you know, new, new potential future residents. And then we did connect to Bear Tooth and Two locations, make sure that we have adequate emergency access. We are happy to do any sort of traffic analysis and talk about what would need to happen on Bear Tooth for the traffic. However, we're going to generate significantly less traffic than a commercial use. But obviously we're happy to do any analysis and talk through any improvements that would be warranted by our community. And then we are, you can see that we planned this to avoid impacts on the existing wetlands and work with the existing drainage that's on the site. So like I said, we haven't gotten into a significant amount of engineering just yet, but hopefully Mr. King can address anything that you may have, you know, have detailed questions on. I'm happy to answer any of your questions.
What's your press point?
I'm sorry, what was that?
What is your press point?
So the studios, I'm sorry. The one bedroom is our smallest unit. Those start about eight, I wrote now nine hundred and eighty three square feet would be the smallest. Up to the four bedroom, that's about eighteen hundred square feet. And like I said, some would have garages and some wouldn't, but there's a very, there's not just one four bedroom and, you know, there's, there's a range within those numbers.
Okay. What will the rent be for that?
So the rent for our, our base rent as of today, and we do, you use revenue management. So it's hard to say what it would be, you know, when we broke ground, but right now our projected rent starts at about seventeen hundred for a one bedroom, up to twenty five hundred for the four bedroom. And that would be base rent. So like I said, the garage would be extra, the, you know, if there's maybe upgraded finishes in a specific unit, you know, it all kind of fluctuates.
These are attached townhomes, but it's the same time you've called them, looking at this as apartments essentially.
Correct. It will be run the same way, you know, a class A apartment community would be.
Okay. And Continental's been around since nineteen seventy nine?
Correct.
Have you ever sold?
We have. And it's, it's a very specific situation when we do that. And it's used to be that we would need to sell a certain percentage of our communities in order to fund future development. And that was when, you know, back when we were building two or three communities a year. While since then, we've, you know, grown within our investor group and gotten some trusted partners, development partners, we've established some development funds. So we've, we've hit a place with our capital investment that we no longer need to fund new development by selling old development. With that, I'm not going to tell you that there are times when like, let's, for example, we had a community in Charleston. And we didn't really have any others nearby. So sometimes it's an operational decision where, well, it's just not supported the way we would like by other communities. And I bring that up because of our presence in Atlanta. That's one of the, one of our strategic initiatives within the company to be better at what we do is to concentrate in markets so that we have that operational efficiency. If we're short staffed for whatever reason, we can bring somebody from one of our other communities to assist. So Atlanta is definitely one of our core markets. So, and, I mean, they're, all of our communities are exceeding expectations. So we want to continue to build our portfolio here. We're not looking to, to sell them off.
Do you still have any communities from the nineteen eighties?
We do. We actually have one of the old, one of the very first springs we ever built is in Palmisola, Florida. And we still own it to this day.
And you personally?
I don't know if it's quite from the eighties. We didn't build them until like almost 2000.
Okay. So you have developments that are 20 years old then?
Yes. Yeah. Cause that's when we shifted to the multifamily. Prior to that, it was, you know, Kohl's and we still own some of those.
So you will not be using a management team? Y'all will do this?
We, it is all continental employees onsite. We, we have over 400 employees across the country at our communities that, that are employed by continental property.
So you will have employees living on site?
Yes. Um, most likely, I, I, living, I guess, many of our communities, the, the management lives onsite. It is not required. I will say that we encourage it. They get discounts. And we also encourage partnerships with the police, you know, we'll, we'll ask them to come and, you know, get, have a presence onsite and give them a, if they're interested. We call them, you know, courtesy officers. So we, we're open to. We call them, you know, courtesy officers, so we we're open to it, but we do not make it mandatory.
Yeah, the question is that, how many staff would you say members you would have for development of the size?
I would say that definitely the senior property manager and assistant property manager leasing associate and that full-time to possibly some support staff. And then at least two maintenance staff, full-time, and then they would obviously, you know, fill in as necessary.
Well, no, we had that meeting and, you know, spoke with you then, since then I looked at this more, and I do have a concern with Beartooth Parkway, I used to live nearby off Elliot. And I would take Beartooth to come to cut through. And right there, that that sharp curve, that's, that's really a visibility issue there, even though it's clear, it's hard to see. You guys looking to do anything with that particular section of road?
Um, that's a very good question, like I said, we haven't gotten into the nitty-gritty details. But we'll definitely look at the trip generations, you know, there's mention of turn lanes, we'll definitely look at that, that may open it up. But I imagine there'll be a lot of clearing, I mean, as much as we would love to keep as much of the existing vegetation that is there. I don't imagine there'll be a lot left, and then we could have that opportunity of opening up sufficient corridors.
I do have some questions or concerns about parking, because in a regular apartment community, you always have ample parking, because you have a parking lot. Here, you're going to have individual, basically almost like individual residents. Look at your floor plan, I don't see any storage. So storage ends up becoming the garage, so people end up parking in the driveway.
Sure.
I would say you're going to need at least twenty-five feet from your garage door to back a curb and or sidewalk, if you have a sidewalk, to face of sidewalk. And I think you need at least a two-car parking driveway. Because even a single, you know, even a one-bedroom, you're going to have probably two people living there. Okay, so looking at some of your renderings, I don't see a very, a lot of throat depth. So what is up?
Does this have a pointer on it?
What is up happening, and and we've developed, I've seen this development, this type of development in the jurisdiction I was from, made the mistake of not requiring that requirement. And I've seen SUVs or large, you know, suburbans parked sideways and and in dropways. Because there's not enough for it.
Yeah.
So, Mr. King, I would ask if that's, could be looked at as far as your design?
Yeah, we definitely will, I think it's it's a part of our grading effort, you know, to to make the space. I know it's a little bit hard to see, and hopefully. So for example, these homes that kind of front this, the northern side of the, this access up to Beartooth, those are all, you know, one and two-bedroom units that do not have garages, and you can see that that driveway goes full depth. So we will definitely look at actually, you know, laying out two cars there, but I I believe it will suffice for two cars. And then we did look at making sure that there are the, there's a couple of off-street parking areas by the club, as well as on the north of Dawson Village Way. And then off, kind of towards the eastern exit, you can see, so there's some parking fields. Right now, I can say that we are exceeding the two-point-two per unit, just a little bit. We have more than two spaces per unit, including garages. So, but I hear you, you know, definitely we want to be conscious of visitor parking.
You end up with a far hazard, you end up with a public safety hazard.
Yeah, with the the on-street parking, I know, is a big concern. So, you know, we can definitely, like I mentioned earlier, you know, we can make it a stipulation of relief that there's no on-street parking. And it is hard to control, to your point, when people, if people are good, how they're going to use their garage. But I agree, we have to, yeah, we have to make sure that we have some adequate apron parking spaces. And it's a little bit challenging, because there's the, there's a code limitation that every, each home can only have a ten-foot curb cut. So that, that makes it challenging, you'll, you'll see there's these little kind of pork chops at some of our four-car garages, when you have two together, we have to block it. So that's actually going to limit some of the parking. But we're still trying, you know, we'll get into the dimensions of that and and try to make sure that a car could still pull in and park. So, yeah, we definitely have heard that multiple times.
Any other questions, applicant? If you would, please come forward, state your name and address and write it on that piece of paper.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board members, Jim King, four sixteen, Overlook Circle, Dawsonville, Georgia. I just wanted to add one thing regarding the parking issue. In a normal subdivision, like you're talking about, John, where you have one hundred and thirteen individual homes, code enforcement in this will be so much easier, because you have one, one owner, one contact person. You know, somebody is, if you had a zoning condition, it says there's no on-street parking. They got one number to call, and they have, like she said, they have onsite managers to take care of that, so it will be, you know, not to say somebody's not going to do it, but it'll be a lot easier.
It's not so much of who's going to enforce it, it's, it's like certain speed limits. You know, if you have a too-lower speed limit, you're out there writing tickets all day long.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, the the point is, it's it's an engineering thing, okay? You can engineer it so you don't have the problem, or you can engineer it so you have a problem, and then you have a problem that has to be somehow enforced. And then you have an issue with public safety trying to get in there to fight a fire.
Right.
You got a problem.
Yeah.
I've seen it, I've I've made the mistake of not requiring that type of thing, and I'm just, I'm here to tell you, it's a problem unless you engineer it. I'm telling you, it needs to be engineered.
One, one good thing they have done is, on the, the units that do have garages, they set the garages to the rear of the lot. So that you have that extra, you know, most, most of your houses, these, most of the ones I develop, I mean, I've designed the garages are the first thing up front, you know, and so that the closest thing to the street, which leaves you very minimal room. The way they've designed it, they set it back, and other ones that don't have garages, they got driveways that go the entire length of the house, back to the back, so it'll. But we'll, we'll definitely address that in engineering, thank you.
Anyone here speak in favor of the application? Seeing none, anyone, anyone here to speak in opposition to the application? Seeing none, it's just time we close the board for discussion. Any discussion? Rezone it from CHP to multifamily.
Driveways need to have at least twenty-five feet from face of face of garage to either back a curb or face of sidewalk. So that could be looked at and addressed.
Any other discussion? Have we received any other comments from emergency services? Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Is there a motion?
Motion to recommend approval.
Have a motion with a second, that the stipulation is added, if you'd be willing to have the stipulation, okay? Motion and a second to approve with one stipulation being that driveways would have twenty-five feet from the face of the garage, the curb cut. All in favor? Motion is carried four-zero. We have recommended approval, but you will need to come before the board of commissioners, June sixteenth, following the four P M work session. Presentation of Z A twenty-two dash twelve, David Coward, someone here speaks for Mr. David Coward. Would please come forward, write your name and address on the piece of paper there on the podium.
Yes, sir, my name's Peyton Anderson, I'm with Davis Engineering and Surveying, I'm I'm representing David Coward, the property owner here. And we are just simply asking to rezone this, these two, or one acre, one acre and a half piece. What are we asking to rezone to? R S, R S R, yes, Mr. Coward is selling the remaining acres of this tract to a church to build on that parcel, the property that you see that we're trying to rezone is below an detention pond, it really does them no purpose. So he's retaining that property, and when we got into it, we realized that this was zoned, I believe agricultural, yeah, already, and the minimum lot acres there, I think, was five acres, and we did not have five acres. So it brought us here to have these rezone and able to build these two residential lots. So if y'all've got any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Do you have any concrete plans for the residential lots, Mr. Anderson?
That is up to him, at this point, I don't think so, I think he's looking to just create two available, either he's going to build homes on at some point, or put them for sale for someone else to build.
Okay, and the lots that you back up to, what size are they? The one-acre tract?
As far as I know, everything around us is all one-acre tracks, correct? Yeah, it's been a while since I've looked at the zoning map.
I figured you, well, you've been with Davis, you might just know off the top of your head.
I deal with so many different municipalities, it's hard to keep up with all of them.
It looked like one-acre track, but just curious.
Okay, and same across the street, across the road, is a lot of one-acre tracks as well, running directly on Kylo Church Road.
Any other questions, applicant? Thanks, sir.
And I I do want to ask, does it make a difference if the lots have changed slightly? Slightly being, when we first created, and I brought both, and I brought the new ones with me, slightly being, at the time, we originally submitted this plan, we had not physically located that detention pond, and we have since located it, so that rear line just moved.
Has the acreage changed?
The one-acre lot is still one-acre even, the second lot is one-point-five-three rather than plus or minus one-point-four. So it's actually one, one and a half acre plus, simply because we actually located that pond and made sure we weren't interfering with it.
Should be fine for purposes, yes. Anyone here speak in favor of the application? Anyone here speak in opposition to the application? Seeing none, just time we close the board for discussion, gentlemen, be having a discussion. Is there a motion? Second. Going to second to approve, all in favor? Motion is carried four-zero. Updates by planning, oh, we have recommended approval, sorry, we've recommended approval. You will need to come before the board of commissioners on June sixteenth, following their four P M work session, they will make the final decision. Updates by plan and development, I should, Mr. Harmon?
I don't have anything new to report, we're still in the midst of building safety month. And we are operating with our new software, and things are going very well.
Anything with Harmony? Brings us to Adam Cave, who's German, is there a motion to adjourn? This time we are adjourned, meeting is over.